It is Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, October 11th at 5:31 PM. And I'd like to call this work session to order. First on our agenda are city updates. Ms. Lano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council. The mayor is out of state this week here with Councilor Atencio. They are attending the 2022 Sister Cities International UX and Mexico Mayor's Community Summit. They're in San Diego with an opportunity to visit with mayors from Tijuana, Mexico, and the surrounding cities. So he's not with us this evening. The first update I have is the COVID update. And really, I brought it quickly because the numbers do look good this past week. Down to a positive one-week cumulative count of 128.7 and a one-week cumulative positivity rate of 4.4%, which was under 5%. And I haven't reported that in several weeks. And also, we have 11 days of stabilized hospitalizations at Parkview Hospital. So that's the highest number of stabilized days that I reported in some time as well. I mean, moving on to the city updates, I want to share with you what is at your desk there. And the city's 2021 audit is complete. The annual comprehensive financial report is at your desk, and it looks like this this evening. And it also has in an insert, which is the auditor communication. It is a printed report. And also, the partners and managers from Ruben Brown Accounting Firm. They'll be presenting our audit following the city updates this evening. And we've also posted the audit on the city's website for the public's review. The next update I have is, I've never done this before in my four years of work here. On the same night, you also have the next year's budget. Last year's audit, this year's current information and next year's budget. It has been bound, for your reference, and on the city council agenda is the formal submission from the mayor of the 2023 proposed budget. There is also an insert in here for your review. After last week's initial work session, there were some directions that were given to change items. And Anna printed for us an email, which would be itemizing each of the items that have been changed upon your direction, plus two additional errors when they were reconciling that they found. So the updated amount from 15 million some last week to the B1 balance is 16,109,000. So the email I printed for you directly, and it is an insert. The next two city council work session budgets for the 2023 full budget. The first one will be next Monday, October the 17th, and it is the last item on that agenda next week. And then the right, the following day, we come back and we start the second of the work session budget meetings. And it is Tuesday, October the 18th, and it does begin at 5:30. And both of those sessions are right here in the chambers. There are, the mayor's office staff is still coordinating with invitations to both the Latino chamber to attend and present on either the 17th or 18th next week, and also to the YMCA to attend on either night. Both of those items have not yet been adjusted in what Anna sent to you as of today. So those two items to change their non-departmental amount are not included in this proposed budget yet. And of course, we can add them at your discretion and direction after next week. Now that you have the book, you also have any items that, when you look at this week, you would like further information on and/or a director or program manager to attend one of the, or both of those meetings next week. The mayor has asked for directors to attend, but if you want specific information, just give, send me an email or a phone call, and we'll make sure and gather that and send it as early in advance as we can, so that you all have it for discussion either next Monday or next Tuesday. We have plenty of time for follow-up work sessions after next week. If we work with, with Councilor Martinez and set follow-up dates if necessary before we end up in with the final 2023 budget. The requirement in the charter is for the mayor to submit to city council formally the first meeting of October, which is this evening. And it does require then that the city clerk make a public notice that the public hearing will be on Monday, October the 24th during the regular city council meeting. That's it for budget for the moment. We move on to the fall cleanup discount days at Waste Connections. They are, they will begin on October 15th and will run for 10 days to the 25th. Household waste only. The flyers will be on social media and the city's website. The cost is 50% off of the regular gate rate. So that will occur beginning later in the week. The next update is the fall team-up to cleanup. It's all about cleanup now that we're in fall. The event date has been set for Saturday, October the 24th, at the State Fairgrounds. The first reading of the agreement was on the agenda this evening. And the final reading, the final reading will be on October the 24th. The marketing is being finalized this week. The times have been set at 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM on that Saturday. The access map, they're still working on to send the public through a particular gate and access through a, exit through a particular gate. They're also, Haley is also working with Black Hills Energy. They will be sponsoring an energy kit giveaway while supplies last during that Saturday. And then an update on more cleanup. Fountain Creek, the cleanups does start tomorrow with Public Works cleaning trash, starting at Elizabeth and Dillon and heading down I-25. They intend to start early tomorrow morning. Next Monday, on the 17th, the code enforcement campaign will begin down at Fountain Creek with code enforcement and other city departments and other community agencies. They intend to start at the north end and begin working south to Highway 50 bypass. The city council, you did receive the press release that Haley did release earlier today regarding the Fountain Creek cleanup. And there's one last city update this evening before we conclude and move on to the work session. I'd like to turn it over to Haley Robinson, our Director of Public Affairs. She's going to share the background on the Bloomberg Innovation Training Program. And it provides the background for our agenda item M9. It's a resolution this evening for consideration of your approving a middle school mentoring program participation for up to 20 city employees. So I'll turn it over to Haley and welcome Shanna. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I also have brought Shiana Farmer, the President and CEO of Public County United Way, to be here with me this evening. I did pass out to each one of you the middle school mentoring pamphlet, but a little bit of background as to why we're here this evening. So you may be aware that the city is involved with Bloomberg Innovation Training. It's something that we started in February and will continue through throughout the year. And the focus of that is youth gang prevention. And as a result of the work that we've done, we did quite a bit of data and research, pulled together some community members, because we know that we are not the experts here at the city. So this includes District 60, many of our partners throughout the community, mental health advocates, youth advocates, people within the Catholic Diocese and other just prominent members of the community in order to get some good data and research. And as a result of that, we noticed the, the pinpoint was middle school. And so as a result, we are in the midst of a testing session. But before we continue with our testing session, there's something that's already in place here in Pueblo, which is the middle school mentoring program with the Public County United Way. And obviously, I said, we're not the experts. They are. And so the reason that we're coming to you before the end of our testing or even before the end of our innovation is because this program's already in place, but it's the beginning of the school year. And so time is of the essence. And as a result, we'd like to come before you and ask that 20 members of city staff would be able to participate in this program. I will let you know that I am also a middle school mentor. This is my second year participating in the program, something that I participated in before coming to the city of Pueblo. And I'll let Shanna speak to the partnership and, and why this is important for Public County United Way.
Thank you so much, and I want to thank you all for considering this partnership. Our middle school mentoring program has been impacting lives for over a decade here. And we're just so proud to be partnering with our school districts and so many businesses and individuals who have committed to doing this. And having the city really be a leader to initiate something to this magnitude and commitment would just really help to expand. One of the main limitations of the program right now are volunteers. And so the more volunteers we have, the more young lives that we can impact. And so the city taking this kind of stance not only increases our numbers of mentors, but it also really sets the stage and encourages other organizations to follow suit. And the more lives that we can impact really ultimately increases the chance for success for Pueblo's future and our youth. So it's a really exciting concept and happy to field any questions.
Madam Chair, that does conclude the city updates this evening, and we will take directions questions or move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Lano, Ms. Farmer, and Ms. Robinson for all that information. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Flores?
Yes, I've been thinking about this for a while, and that is the, how we distribute the vendor fee. As you know, the non-departmental budget provides funds to about three different areas in there. One is Public Urban Renewal Authority, the other is the Greater Public Chamber, and there might be a third. I can't remember the other one. But that, that vendor fee is, is really there in order to market the city. And we had, and the reason I brought it up today is that we had an urban renewal meeting today. And it's, it's amazing how much marketing has been done now that COVID's a little bit behind us. And the successes that we're having at the convention center, the Chili Frigola Festival, I mean, just the explosion of, of the marketing of the city of Pueblo has been tremendous. And I just want, I want to know, you know, what amount we have to distribute under the vendor fee? Who makes the decision as to how that's distributed? And then third, you know, is the distribution effective? So those are the things that I've been thinking about, because I know that, that under that non-departmental budget, that there was a, a reduction, I think, in one of the, one of the entities that gets money out of that. And I just don't want the city shooting themselves in the foot by not utilizing that money correctly and by not using and not distributing it accordingly to how it should be. And I, I don't know whether or not I ever had a report on how the vendor fee operates, how much it is, how we distribute it. Are we doing it correctly? All of that. And I'd like to have maybe a report at our next budget meeting. It'd give me a better handle on how we're doing as far as the distribution to those entities that are marking, marketing the city. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Flores. And I have written down a report on the vendor fees, what amount, who makes decision, and how we distribute it.
And that wasn't a question. It was just, you know.
Request to bring that information next week.
Counselor Maestri?
Are we going to get a update on the Chili Festival and how much proceeds they netted from? Would they be coming in on a work session and talking to us and telling us about the financials of the Chili Festival?
Counselor Maestri, we can make that request. Would you like them to come next week during the budget sessions on Monday or Tuesday, or just a subsequent work session?
A subsequent work session? I'd like, I'd like to see how that's ended up. I know in the past, they've said they've had netted 40,000. It seemed like this year was their biggest year, so I'd like to see how all of this has played out. Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to follow up on that. We had, ironically, we had an urban renewal meeting today. And both Sarah and I actually got an update from the chamber. But it's the Greater Public Chamber of Commerce that handles that whole, you know, operation. And so they, they're the ones that actually run it. They, they get the revenue and, you know, that's.
Well, they're asking for an increase.
Right, right.
And, and so we'd like to see how well money is being spent. Now it's playing out, so forth.
No, I totally agree with you. I just wanted to, you know, just kind of give you a second.
You know, also, what I would like to see is a breakdown of the lodging tax that we receive. Like which, how, the amounts that we're receiving from each one of the individual hotels out there? I'm wondering, I, I'm just curious, and I know I asked the chamber this. I don't know that they would know it directly, but I'm curious as to, in the increase of the lodging tax, is it coming from actual tourism? Or is it coming because we have all of these motels filled with people that are, that that's where they need to stay? So is it, you know, that, to me, that's not an increased amount of tourism. That's just more that, you know, the motels are housing people. So I'd like to see a breakdown of that.
Counselor Maestri will bring that next Monday or Tuesday. I am, I will have to ask our city attorney with respect to which hotels submit how much in lodging tax. I'm not certain I'm able to do that, but I certainly will have a report or breakdown as to the source for tourism and/or for stays.
Well, it's, isn't it public record who pays what?
I'm not sure that the individual tax that they pay is.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a voucher. I'm talking about, if we look at, say, Motel 6 does this amount of money. And we'll know, we'll know from the names of the motels and hotels and what they're submitting is really where the source is coming from, because we know that we have a lot of hospitality that doesn't serve like a tourism public. They serve a, a different type of, you know, client.
Thank you. We'll bring that report.
Thank you.
Other questions, Counselor Winner?
Yeah, I was quite curious about the Tabor Emergency Fund. Since we have debrused, I was wondering why that was still in the budget. It's about three and a half million.
Counselor Winner will bring the detail of why we're required to still calculate and have a Tabor fund. We just don't have that excess. The excess Tabor calculation is what we do not have to return to taxpayers, but we'll bring the. I'm going to have, look, phone a friend. Our city attorney is going to bail me out.
Counselor Winner, very good question. We have debrused, meaning we can keep excess revenue. But stabber, Tabor still requires that there be a 3% emergency fund that it be set aside. Now, how they compute the 3% is, is not based on all revenue received by the city. We're required to make that computation and to set those funds aside. Council can decide the amount of reserves that it wants to keep, and the Tabor reserves would be included in that.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Lano, can you confirm that the team-up to cleanup day is October 29th?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry if I, if I said it incorrectly. The team-up to cleanup is Saturday, October the 29th.
Great.
From 8 to 3.
And will we get social media stuff soon? Thanks. And, and then for the, I, you know, I think that the mentorship is a great idea. You know, I know that how impactful a middle school time period is to a young person's life. Help me understand why it's just 20 employees and not more.
Sure. We, as a group, as the Bloomberg Innovation Team approached the mayor about it. And so this is essentially a pilot year if it's approved by you. And so 20 seems like a decent number of people, because to be perfectly honest, we, we don't know how many people within the city actually are mentors at this time or would be interested to be mentors at this time. But another piece of that was also the feasibility as far as taking time away from work. At this point, we looked at the, the timeframe. It's, it's an hour to meet during lunch. And so for the most part, that, that wouldn't incur a cost to the city. But if, if there was like an excessive amount of individuals who wanted to sign up, then obviously, we would have to look at what that would look like for a budget standpoint. So 20 was just a nice number to put out at first. We really feel like if we get five to 10, it would be successful for a pilot year. And then moving forward, people would realize how rewarding and successful it is. And so hopefully, tell fellow employees to sign up next year.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Counselor Maestri?
Yes. Are we the only government entity here that is participating in that? Or do you have the different, you know, the DA's office, Health Department, county? Because I see you have District 60 and 70 here. So are we getting people from all of the different governmental agencies here in town?
So the short answer is we have mentors who come to us from a variety of offices. So, but they're more individual, on an individual basis. And so you would be really the first ones making that commitment of, as the city, we're committing to this many mentors that will be paid as part of it. And so our hope is that it will, it'll almost be a challenge to some of the other entities to do the same. So we certainly see a ripple effect very likely to happen. But we have amazing volunteers, mentors that are coming to us from many of the departments that you mentioned. And this just really solidifies and kind of codifies that, that relationship. And, and hopefully starts a really incredible ripple effect for the others. And just to piggyback off that, Counselor Maestri, I do know that the DA's office has their employees sign up for 10, you know, 10 hours a month or whatever, out of their bank, out of the DA's office. They don't have to do the United Way mentoring program, but that's available for whatever, to be involved in the community. So it's similar, but it's not earmarked specifically for United Way. Seeing no other business, I will move right along on the agenda, which is all about the city audit. So can I please have presenters from Ruben Brown to the podium, please? And whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, I'm Matt Marino. I'm the engagement partner. We are with Ruben Brown. We, this is our first year as the city's auditors. With me today is Max Havricorn. He was the engagement manager. And then sitting back there is Russell White. He was kind of our backup partner or a relationship partner. And so we always team up and make sure that we have several people we can chat with. And so we're going to go through the audit results of the city. Every year, the city undergoes a couple of different audits. The first one is an audit of the financial statements. Also, because the city receives and expends more than $750,000 of federal funds, we have to do an extra audit called a single audit or a federal funds audit. And we're looking at how the city uses those funds. What are you spending it on? What kind of controls are applied to those funds? And we'll walk through the results of the financial statement audit as well as the single audit. I'll go for about 10 minutes. I'll walk you through the, the ACFA or the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's called that because you submit the document to the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Excellence, which the city has received for many, many years. And we anticipate the city will receive again this year. So I'll walk you through the document. I know you have the document in front of you, so I'll refer to the document page numbers. I'm going to go through at high level. If we went through the entire document, we'd be here for like five, six hours. I don't think you all want to do that tonight. I'm more than happy to come back and talk more detailed if you'd like. So we'll go through that, and we'll, feel free to stop me. It will not ruin my presentation at all. If you have specific questions you'd like me to address, just go ahead and jam in there. Or if you want to wait till the end, that's acceptable as well. So if you go to page one of the document, which is the auditor's opinion, you'll see, it looks a little different if you've seen audit reports in the past. All auditors had to implement new auditing standards this year. And so what, one of the main changes that did is it moved the audit opinion out of the middle of the report. And it kind of put as the first paragraph in the report. So you'll see in the first paragraph, which is on page one, you'll see Ruben Brown letterhead at the top. It says that we issued an unmodified, or what is commonly known as a clean opinion on the city's financial statements. So that's good, because you want to have clean financial records when you're making budgetary decisions and other city decisions, which is important. Right behind the audit report, starting on page six, is the management's discussion analysis. It's just like it sounds. It's management's discussion and analysis of what happened during 2021 with regard to city operations. It's a good, I would say, 10, 15,000-foot overview of city operations. Lets you know kind of the major highlights, things you might want to know what happened. But it doesn't get into too much detail, and then as you get deeper in the document, you can get into infinitely more detail. Right behind the management discussion analysis on page 20 is your statement of net position. This is often referred to as your government-wide financial statements. This is kind of full accrual basis of accounting. We're looking at all of the assets held by the city, all of the liabilities the city has, as well as net position. Net position is merely your assets less your liabilities, and that position is what's left over after that formula is done. Right behind the government-wide financial statements is your fund financial statements, and specifically, your governmental fund financial statements. This is probably where you're most familiar with managing city operations. You adopt budgets by fund. So the major funds are presented here in the front, and the non-major funds are presented in the back. So I'm on page 23. Right behind the governmental funds is your proprietary funds or kind of your business-type activities that the city engages in. So that's your golf, sewer, stormwater, Memorial Airport, as well as some internal service fund activity. Just like with the government-wide financial statements, these are full accrual. They show all of the assets, all of the liabilities, less the assets, less liabilities would be your net position for all of those individual funds. And then right behind that is your fiduciary or your custodial funds. This is money that the city is holding on behalf of others. That's why it's called fiduciary or custodial. It's money the city is not using for its own operations. It can be remitted to other agencies or other individuals outside of city operations. So that's why it's there to denote what's there. Then right behind that is your footnotes. The footnotes have a good bit of information. That starts on page 32. The footnotes provide some context on how do we value assets? How do we value liabilities? How are the pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities measured? What sort of actuarial assumptions are made when that is occurring? So that goes on for many, many pages. And there's a lot of good data in there if you want to look at it. But it would take many, many hours to go through it in detail, because there's a good bit of information. But like I said, I'm happy to come back and talk about anything specifically with regard to governmental accounting. It's what we do. It's what we do all the time. It's what we enjoy talking about. So I'd be happy to talk about that. Behind your footnotes is your required supplemental information. So that's got some historical snapshots for the pension and OPEP or other post-employments, as well as your budget to actual for your general fund. I'm on page 129. And then behind the required supplemental information is a whole bunch of non-major funds. So you've noticed that we only present a few funds as major. And then there's a bunch of other funds that the city does have that get presented in the back of the document. There's a quantitative calculation whereby if things meet a certain formula, they get shown as major. And if they're not major, they get shown in back, because we need to present all of the funds of the city and the financial operations. And if we go all the way to the back, we'll get to the part that I'm sure you all want to talk about, which kind of references the single audit. I'm on page 220. So I'll let you flip back there, because it's a good amount of pages back there. So as, as I mentioned earlier, because the city does receive and expend more than $750,000 of federal funds, we get to do these extra audits called a single audit. The first opinion is a report over governmental, over financial reporting in compliance with governmental auditing standards. And you'll notice in that document that we do, on page 220, and I flip over to page 221, you'll notice that we talk about a significant deficiency. A significant deficiency is a weaknesses, a weakness in the city's internal control that is of great enough magnitude that we need to let those charged with governance with, which in the city's case, is city council, be made aware of it. And so that significant deficiency relates to revenue recognition. There was a deferred inflow on last year's, the 2020 financial statements that should have been recognized as revenue, and they were not. And so they needed to be restated as a restatement of net position. And so that's the first one. Any questions on that one?
Counselor Graham?
Is this more of a policy that the city has?
This one is not a policy. I would say this one is an error. Yes.
And how much of an error are we talking?
It was a little bit over a million dollars.
Can you maybe describe a little bit more about? Can you maybe describe a little bit more about a weakness in internal control related to revenue flow? Like, what is, help me understand that more.
Yeah. So one of the main conventions specific to governmental funds is if you've either not earned it or it's not available, it might be a deferred inflow. And so this is a deferred inflow that was on last year's governmental financial statements. I believe it related to, was it a, what was the specific? You remember that one?
Receipt of certain amounts from the Urban Renewal Authority related to, I believe it was a payoff of a, a short-term loan or a term loan to the Urban Renewal Authority. They had bond refinanced. The proceeds came in. So the money came in.
So since it came in, it was all earned. It needed to be taken off your, your balance sheet or your, and recognized via revenue. And so that's why it's an error in recognizing that revenue. So. And so city staff is aware of it. And honestly, I would like to point out that your, your city staff, together with your external consultant that you use, did make us aware of it. It was not something we found as a result of the audit. At the beginning of the audit, your city staff and your team said, hey, we noted this when we were preparing this year's audit, that this likely should have been recognized in last year's. And so that was, while it, they did make it aware, that probably saved it from being a higher magnitude finding because your control system did work, but we still wanted to make you aware of it. Okay, the next one is your uniform guidance or your, basically your report over the use of federal funds. And so that's on page two-twenty-two. And I think the easiest place to go in the federal funds report is all the way back on page. Get to it. On page two-hundred-and-thirty, which is your summary of your audit results. So you'll see various check marks all over the place. We audited six programs this year. We audited the state and full, state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is commonly known as ARPA. We audited the highway planning and construction, the airport improvement, which was partially COVID-funded or COVID funds funded, the CBDG entitlement grant cluster, your home investment partnership program, and then your coronavirus relief funds are your, your, the original COVID funding. And so we did audit all those programs. We did issue a clean opinion with regard to those programs. We noted no items that we needed to bring to your attention. With regard to that, we did issue a significant deficiency over the preparation of your, your schedule of expenditure of federal awards. So if you look forward a couple of pages in this document, you'll see several different pages of the different programs that we, we as a city spent money under. We, as a part of our audit process, we looked at a policy with regard to how the city accrues expenses. What do I mean by accrue expenses? If the city has engaged a vendor to perform a service, whether it be auditing services, building a building, whatever it is, if you've received those services in any one given year, you would want to accrue those back to the year in which they pertain to, even though you might not receive the invoice until like a couple of weeks after month end. So we did notice a policy whereby some of the city's expenditures were not being accrued back to the right year. And so that did cause a change in the CFA or your Schedule of Expenditure or Federal Awards, as well as a change in some accruals on individual funds, as well as some liabilities that were picked up on those funds. The accrual of those missed expenses were material to the fund. So we issued a material weakness with regard to that. And then we also issued a significant deficiency with regard to the impacts of how it impacted the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards. It did not have to do with spending on unallowable activities. It's just a accounting function that needed, that would, we would recommend get corrected going forward. City staff has been very cooperative and understands the need for it, especially as the city is looking at undertaking capital projects in the future, whether you get money from the infrastructure bill, if you issue bonds for maybe some, some fire stations I'm hearing could be happening in the future. Whatever it is, getting accurate financial reporting is important because if you get grant funding, you would be nice to get reimbursed from the federal funds rather than using city resources if possible.
At this point, will any of these weaknesses affect us getting federal funding?
They will not affect you getting federal funding unless you continue to have the same recommendation that is not remedied, if that makes sense. Many organizations get material weaknesses and significant deficiencies for various reasons. The place where you see people get into trouble with it is if they get the same finding for three, four, five years. And then your agencies might start saying, is it a, is it an honest error? Or is it a disregard for the rules, if that makes sense?
Does that conclude your presentation?
No, I can go a little bit more. I just want to make sure.
Other questions right now?
We're gonna, Max is gonna walk you through the required auditor communications, but I wanted to get you through the audit reports, talk about the different recommendations we had. Kind of how they, well, we did issue three different recommendations. Two of them kind of related to a, one of the city policies that affected two different things, if that makes sense.
All right. Well, now that Matt's done all that heavy lifting, I get to come in and hit cleanup here. All of that is the, what we did to get to the point where we could issue our audit opinions. And what I have to do now as, as the auditor is, at the end of every single audit, we are required to communicate to the board or the city council in this case. Basically, some various required auditor communications by our own audit standards in relation to various things that we make our, structure our opinion upon. First of those things is you, if you take a look at the auditor communication insert that Laura did mention to you earlier, effectively, it says the same thing that we've talked about in our opinion letter, that we issued a clean opinion and we had no significant issues outside of those items that Matt had indicated. There are some qualitative aspects of accounting practices. All of those are in the first note to the financial statement, so you can refer to those if you need to go into further detail there. The management of the city requires, makes a few accounting estimates. Some of these most sensitive estimates relate to the useful lives of capital assets and their depreciation, claims that are incurred related to your self-insurance funds, all the assumptions that go into both your pension and other post-employment benefit plans and how those, you know, liabilities are calculated, and other disclosures related to your ongoing investments and how those are valued in, under fair value guidance. We evaluated all of those assumptions made by management and we found none of them to be outside of the scope of generally accepted accounting principles. We do make note of the most sensitive disclosures. Most of those sensitive disclosures relate to the actual, the sensitive estimates we talked about before, related to the fair value of the investments, pensions, the OPEB amounts. We also make reference to the prior period adjustments, as Matt talked about, both for the revenue recognition item and for the additional accruals that were required to be, us to restate the beginning balance of certain funds and other things related to risk management and commitments and contingencies on the city's level. Other circumstances that could have affected our auditor's report, for the purposes of this letter, professional standards require us to communicate any circumstances that affect the former contact and report. As we said before, we issued a clean opinion. However, there is an emphasis of a matter paragraph that is included in our opinion. All it does is reference the prior period adjustment. We're required to do that if there is a court, kind of correction of an error. We do have to make reference to where it is in the notes to the financial statements, but it is not a, you know, modification to our audit opinion. There were a couple of matters related to consultation outside of our engagement team, where we had to bring in a consult still with Ruben Brown, but to make sure that we were getting the decision right. Most of that related to the restatements of those prior period amounts. Difficulties encountered performing the audit. All in all, we did not incur a ton of difficulties encountered in the audit other than the amounts, or other than the situation of coming in rather late in the process and certain things of getting used to the audit process that the city does. And that's just a function of a first-year audit with new auditors. That happens. Finally, we are required to communicate to you all corrected and uncorrected misstatements we found during the audit. Those schedules are attached, the, both the adjusting journal entry report and the past journal entry report. Adjusting journal entry report is the adjustments that were made during the audit process. And the pastor lunches were the ones that we noticed during the audit process, but were not, or elected not to be booked by management because they were not material and would not affect anybody, any user of the financial statement in making a decision when they look at it. So those were not recorded in the audit process. And those will also clear up as we go forward into the next year. We are also required to discuss with you if we had any disagreements with management. We had none. Management has provided a letter to us that is attached here, basically representing to us that they have truthfully answered all of our questions and provided all the information that we have asked for and that it is correct. And there's also, there were no other consultations that we need to do with outside independent, independent accountants. There were no other audit findings or issues we need to report. And the last section here is related to the internal control related matters. And those were all covered by Matt. Those were the findings related to progress billings, the finding related to revenue recognition, and then the finding related to the CFA, which is of course related to the first finding of the accruals of progress billing. And that is all our required communications.
Yeah. And I just want to say thank you to the city staff, Laura, Anna, Bree. They worked very hard to get us through our process. I know we're a little later in the audit year than the cities may be accustomed to. We did start the audit process really all in twenty-two because we were finally under contract in early twenty-two. So going forward, we would look to do some interim work, work before year end is over to kind of make sure that we're doing what we can to shift the load away from year end. Your, your city team worked incredibly hard, not just finance, sales tax, various, various different departments gave us information to complete the audit and they were very great to work with, very, it was our first year working together and we really appreciate the partnership this year.
Thank you, Ruben Brown. What questions are there from counsel? Counselor Mastry and then Counselor Flores.
Through your audit process, are you auditing general accounting practices? Or how the audits are supposed to read? Or are you auditing the, auditing the actual numbers?
We're looking at, we need to understand the accounting practices to understand how the numbers are recorded. So that's how we came upon the practice, the policy regarding the accrual of construction invoices. So we do look at the accounting practices and where we can make recommendations, we do. And so that's why we did, did issue the recommendations that you do all your accruals for your various invoices that you've received and that that also be correlated to your schedule of expenditure of federal awards.
Okay, because President Graham has left, but she has been talking about a forensic audit, requesting a forensic audit. Could you please tell us the difference between her request of a forensic audit and what you, how you have audited?
We are auditing to the accounting standards. The forensic audit would maybe looking at a specific matter with regard to city policy or other policies. I, I wouldn't be able, because I have not been given the, a memo that would detail what the scope would look like, if that makes sense. But a forensic audit is specifically designed to measure against, in most cases, usually related to fraud. And so that's where, or if there were not accounting records available to audit, if that makes sense.
Okay. Counselor Flores.
I, I wanted for you to describe why, well, let me, let me take a step back. Most communities, and I would say it's kind of fifty-fifty, they treat an urban renewal authority as a department of the city. And then there's others where urban renewal is separated. In our case in Pueblo, the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority has its own autonomy as far as its structure and its creation. It handles everything independently of the city. But I noticed that urban renewal is throughout this whole financial statement, but to the degree that you are relying on their auditors for any information. But could you describe why that relationship exists in that manner? And that it becomes, I noticed that it becomes part of the financial analysis. But I'm wondering if you could clear that up?
Yes, I can do that. It's a little higher level governmental accounting, but I'll go through it. So it's presented as a discreetly presented component unit. And so that means that you may not have full control over it, but it is closely enough related to the city that it should be reported in city financials, if that makes sense. I'm simplifying the accounting standards rather drastically to not go too technical, but that is why. And so that's why we do rely on the auditors of urban renewal and we don't re-audit their work. We just take their audit report and match up what they have in their audit report to what's presented in the city. Did I miss anything, Max?
Yeah, the only thing that I would add to that is that we do, are required to test whether or not that the audit firm that did the audit of the Urban Renewal Authority was credible. We believe that their work was, you know, able to be relied upon by us. So there's not, we do some limited procedures in relation to that to make sure it looks like the audit was done.
That they, they hire a firm that gets peer reviews, that, that, you know, that they, 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 they have the necessary skills and experience to perform these type of audit that they're performing.
Precisely. So that we do some procedures to make sure that we can rely on the audit, that audit information. But yeah, as Matt was saying, part of being a discreetly presented component unit means you have to incorporate their financial information into the, you know, financial statement of the main government, in this case, the city. And it can lead to some very interesting presentation of those notes, especially where it looks like everything is being duplicated effectively from the Urban Renewal Authority's perspective. But it is part of that governmental auditing standard that Matt was talking about when you have that, for it to be incorporated that way and to look, you know, a little bit disjointed.
It would be, the thought being is that if you excluded, it could be misleading to the users of the financials because there's enough relationship between the city and the urban renewal that they would need to understand that there's quite a bit that happens between the two entities. And they need to look at both when they're looking at how city operations is considered as a whole.
Yeah, I think that my question probably maybe is more directed maybe at our legal counsel as to whether or not ultimately the city of Pueblo would be responsible and legally liable for anything the urban renewal does.
Colorado has an urban renewal statute. So every urban renewal authority is organized under that statute. We are not legally responsible for the acts or omissions of the officers, agents, employees of the Urban Renewal Authority.
Yeah, I think that's probably more answers my question. I had another question too, and that, do you do other municipalities? Do you do, is this kind of a specialty that you do cities?
Virtually pretty much what I do. I do cities, counties, special districts, state work. I, several other cities, couple, you know, it's, it's about seventy percent of what I do throughout the year. So it's both Max and I.
I always, I always tell people that Pueblo is very frugal with the way, the way they handle their finances. And can you confirm that our long-term debt is, is five million dollars? If you look at the, our, our long-term liabilities, we do have, I think, a, I, I was looking at it here.
Well, and you had to look in the footnotes because on the face, if you're looking at the statement in that position, including that due in one year is some of your pension liability, which is, while it's not debt, it is a liability that will be due at some point. Yes.
To Gatsby that you have.
Correct. Several years ago, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board changed how that accounting would take place whereby you, if the pension is underfunded in the actuaries estimation, that you would pick up a liability that basically is amortized over thirty years and booked as a liability on your, your financial statements.
Yeah, I was, I was just looking at our, our bond payments and, but anyway, I, I just, you know, it's probably something that we need to talk.
I'm sure city staff could give you the detailed answer.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from counsel? Anna and Bree, do you have any, do you want to say anything?
No, we enjoyed working with Ruben Brown this year and hopefully future years will be much smoother now that we have that relationship moving forward.
Great. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Ruben Brown, for that presentation and for that comprehensive report. Moving right along on our agenda, the next agenda item that we have is a presentation from Ms. Ellis regarding the Community Commission on Housing and Homelessness. Everybody ready?
Good evening. Thank you. As mentioned, I'm Alexis Ellis, the Executive Director of Pueblo Triple A. My organization facilitates the Community Commission on Housing and Homelessness. And we were asked to provide an update to city council after the mayor and Counselor Graham. We were asked to provide an update to city council after the mayor and Councilor Graham came to visit us at our September meeting. We have the presentation. Moving here. There we go. All right, this is a snapshot of what homelessness looks like in Pueblo. There are currently a hundred and sixty-nine individuals on the by-name list. The by-name list is a real-time waitlist of people in the community who are experiencing homelessness and have connected with an access point because they are looking for housing. Our best estimate from outreach efforts is that there are approximately six hundred to seven hundred literally homeless individuals in Pueblo. This doesn't account for people who might be couch surfing, paying for their own hotel rooms, on the verge of eviction, or living in a similar situation. This slide captures a bright spot in the work that our community is doing around homelessness. Pueblo joined Built for Zero about two years ago. It's a national model that uses data to change how communities work towards ending homelessness. Through the Built for Zero effort, Pueblo is currently working towards achieving functional zero in our homeless veteran population. When functional zero is achieved, it means that homelessness for has ended for that population and any new cases of homelessness are rare and brief. As you can see from the chart, Pueblo has greatly reduced veteran homelessness over the past year. There were eighteen veterans experiencing homelessness in July of twenty twenty-one, and that was reduced to four veterans in twenty twenty-two. We have seen a slight increase since July and now have eight veterans on our by-name list. We are working hard to identify additional living situations and have a goal to reach functional zero in twenty twenty-three for that veteran population. The U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness released these seven principles as best practices to address encampments in June of this year. Pueblo's homeless-serving agencies have adopted many of these practices. However, access to housing options continues to be a barrier to truly solving the encampment issue. Some communities across the country have turned to aggressive law enforcement approaches that criminalize homelessness and close encampments without offering shelter and housing options. While these efforts may have the short-term effect of clearing the encampment from public view, without connection to adequate shelter, housing, and supportive services, encampments will appear again in another neighborhood or even in the same place they had previously been. Access to housing options is the biggest barrier to finding sustainable solutions to our encampment issues. That being said, several community agencies will be joining law enforcement next week to increase outreach efforts along Fountain Creek. We are hopeful that we will identify additional people who are looking for housing and services through that outreach effort. The data on this slide comes directly from Pueblo's Housing Assessment and Strategy Report. As you can see, the our housing gaps are in affordable housing and then in high-end units. We have to address this as a community if we want to end homelessness and in turn the encampments in Pueblo. It is imperative that affordable housing options include supportive services for those coming out of literal homelessness, so they can be more successful once housing is found. Finally, these are just a few of the recommendations that come from the from Pueblo's Housing Assessment and Strategy Report. By adopting some of these strategies, we can address the root cause of homelessness. First, facilitate housing affordability by encouraging builders and developers to construct new homes and multifamily housing units. Although the homes created may be sold or rented at market rates, their creation promotes affordability by helping to satisfy the demand of higher-income households, which would otherwise compete for and bid up the price of existing units. Second, reducing procedural complexity and delay in providing unnecessary entitlements in issuing permits. Periodically reviewing the benefits and costs of local regulations and processes such as architectural design standards, so that particularly particularly onerous or costly requirements can be improved or lightened where appropriate. For instance, removing uncertainty about stormwater facility requirements and ensuring that one-time municipal and utility fees do not add a disproportionate amount to the development cost of new housing units. Third, consider formally incorporating development incentives for affordable or workforce housing into zoning and development codes. Incentives to bridge feasibility gaps for lower-priced housing could include zoning or building variances for affordable housing projects, density or height bonuses, fee waivers such as for utility dap taps, building permits, and plan reviews, rebates of construction sales tax, tax increment financing for qualifying projects, and property tax abatements. Finally, the city of Pueblo should consider all options to alleviate or negate extraordinary costs associated with the conversion of upper floors to multifamily residential uses, which could encourage private property owners to develop business plans for the adaptive reuse of functionally obsolete commercial buildings. Again, this is not the full list of recommendations that come from the report, but you can find the full list in the Pueblo Housing Needs and Strategy Report.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Ellis, for all that information. What questions are there from council? Uh, for Maishri.
So you're going to be accompanying the police down there um behind King Supers in their cleanup. How did, what is your normal course of business? I do guys, I, and you work with a lot of the agencies, the different agencies here. Do you wait for people to come to you, or do you guys organize and go into the encampments and recruit people to try to encourage them to come out with of the encampments and work with your services?
We do have planned outreach. Not every agency is doing outreach currently. Um, some of that's from perceived danger um with going down there, but there is outreach that goes on um throughout the city to identify additional people that might be looking for housing but don't know where to go.
And um for example, even your veterans that are homeless at this time, do you work with um Mount Carmel, the veteran agencies in order to get them moved into housing? Are they required to show um their military service in order to receive veteran help? Um, I could, uh, I know it could be difficult for someone who's homeless to carry papers with them.
Right. Um, the VA actually has a way of checking for veteran eligibility and then also Volunteers of America is another agency that we work with that's able to check those credentials as well.
So when you speak about the danger um of going down to the encampments, have you reached out to law enforcement communities so that you can get out down there more or into these areas more often to offer services or you're you're just waiting for them to come up with a some, I mean, because we provide, the city provides a lot of the agencies with funding. Um, and yet we're growing everywhere in the city, all of the encampments. And if you're in fear of the encampments, it's kind of like counterproductive, right? Because you have these services available. And yet we have people that are still hiding out in the encampments. Um, do you think, are you guys going to come up with a program to maybe improve that outreach?
We're hoping so that this is the first step in moving forward with more um getting more accompany and it meant from police presence.
Yeah, because I mean, uh, services outs, you know, in your in your offices aren't helpful to those in the encampments and the encampments keep growing. So I, it would be nice to improve that outreach.
Right, and that is one of the focuses under Built for Zero as well.
Um, and then also didn't, didn't we approve a um like a software program for you um to where you can count and keep everybody tracked that comes to your agency?
Um, that is actually called the Homeless Management Information System, and that comes down from the state level. Um, and yes, we do use HMIS, and we are currently in the process of um going completely into HMIS. It was being piloted in our area last year, and we are finally getting to go to go fully into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions, Councilor Flores?
You'd mentioned in your preamble that um uh some communities are criminalizing homelessness. And as you know, there's a fine line between violating people's, you know, rights and uh all the other things that go with that. Uh, in your analysis, are we doing anything in Pueblo that is criminalizing something we shouldn't be?
Not that I'm aware of at this time, but um we are making, you know, with the encampments, there's talk about just bulldozing. Um, but if you just bulldoze and there's nowhere to go, um, that's really not solving the issue. That's just relocating people and kind of using resources that could probably be better spent elsewhere.
So um there there's uh another uh, and it's probably not true, but I, is there any evidence that other communities send people to Pueblo?
No, that is kind of an urban legend. Um, if you ask Canyon City, we bus all of our homeless to them.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up. I think I knew the answer, but thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilor Winner.
Hi, thanks for that report and thanks for doing that. Um, when it's coming up here, when are you starting that, on the fourteenth or seventeenth?
The seventeenth.
The seventeenth. Um, you you know, it is important that people know that you do have to go in and clean. So you're not really bulldozing. You have to clean it up because it's an issue of of health.
Absolutely.
Um, and uh, you know, uh, there's a lot of literature out there now. Um, I think George W., um, his administration put forth the effort of housing first. And now there's quite a few articles out there saying that you need to address the alcohol and drug abuse first, or housing will never be successful. Have you, do you have any opinion of that?
Um, housing first has been typically the model that um has shown most successful to get people into housing where they're not just in crisis mode and then worry about uh getting the wraparound services to address the addiction or any mental health issues that might be co-occurring.
Sure, because there is, there is a lot of drug activity uh going on down there. Uh, there was one day, um, I was at the stop sign at Dillon and um uh Highway fifty. And there was a gentleman in the in the median uh that was panhandling and another gentleman and man that crossed over gave him money. And um, you know, I mean, I've been around long enough to know what a drug deal looks like. And then he continued to panhandle. So there's is a lot of enabling going around or going on when you're talking about drivers that are handing over money. Um, and and then this person's just selling drugs to somebody else right there. Um, you know, it just seems like you know, we're doing everything we can to keep these people alive. You know, with um needle exchange programs, methadone clinics. Um, that we even have uh rehab centers. This just seems to be a revolving door. So I don't know. I don't know if, I I mean, I'm almost agreeing with this uh new philosophy that you have to address the alcohol and drug problem first, or housing's not accessible, successful, because this housing first is not working, obviously. And we do have an influx of homelessness right now because they're heading south. So this time of year, we do have an increased number.
Another boarder.
Um, excuse me, uh, we're gonna have our, this is a work session. If you are uh wanting to speak on public forum, then you can sign up during.
Oh, I agree. I mean, we we literally put millions and millions of dollars toward housing. Uh, just the city of Pueblo has done uh lots of things. Um, that, I mean, we could go on and on about. I mean, you could probably mention quite a few right now. Um, if you'd like to get that information, Laura Salana can uh give you that information on how much money we've spent on that. Um, so I agree that these people need to be helped. I'm just wondering does it need to shift back around to to another another plan?
Uh, well, I'm not.
Housing first works for people that definitely want housing. But if you're stuck in alcohol, drug addiction, housing won't be successful. Well, a lot of them are are homeless because of that.
I'm not an expert on addiction, but um my understanding is that you you have to meet the people that are suffering from addiction where they're at. Um, so I can't really speak too much in detail to addiction.
Because we are successful for folks that are seeking housing.
We don't have enough, but we we are successfully housing people when they're looking for it.
Right, so there's quite a few folks that aren't necessarily seeking because they're kind of stuck in that cycle of drugs. I mean, Ross, um, Dress for Less had to move to the South Side because of the constant you know, um theft that was going on up there. So it's just um, it's a problem for businesses and it's a problem for the folks stuck in that. Um, it just seems so hopeless at times. It just uh I don't know. That hopelessness is really bums me out. I just, I I don't know. I guess there is no answer, or we would have it all solved.
I have a question. Um, Lexi, you, I love that you have ended on recommendations because I think so often we get really comfortable with admiring the problem that we don't focus on solutions. Out of the four recommendations that you have presented, which one of those four do you think is most winnable, most feasible, the easiest low-hanging fruit?
I think reducing the procedural complexity, looking at our our planning and zoning regional building to see where we can streamline processes.
I mean, almost uh every affordable housing unit that we've done in the last few years, we waived sewer and water fees and um.
Sure, but there's the the actual process of of going through the planning and zoning that's, it's a lengthy process and there's, you know, other costs besides that as well.
Well, there's a need for that because um, you know, when they're looking for affordable housing and so forth, if we do not go through a process of checks and balances, uh, we end up with a product that sometimes is not health he- healthy or safe, uh, safe for the individuals living there. And so there is a process that they have to go through. Um, the other thing too is, um, we have a model up the road in in Colorado Springs that doesn't require to be sober in order to to live in that fifteen million dollar high-rise of home homeless and um shelter that they have there on the south of Springs. Do you um I recent, last year, I recently went through um with the company that I worked for to work um on some upgrades of repairs. I mean, it, the building was only five, six years old and it was already in disrepair. I just didn't think that it was an appropriate model or a place for homeless people. To me, it seemed like a prison. The only difference was that you could go come and go as you please, but you didn't have to be sober to live there. Um, and it was, it was actually kind of depressing for the people who lived there because it was, it's almost set up like a prison setting, you know, with the bunk beds, and then some have, they shift and transition to different parts of the facility. Um, but the facility was already rundown. And, you know, people were just sitting around watching TV and it didn't seem like, because they didn't have that you weren't forced or you weren't required to go through the programs while you were up there. And so I I thought that, I mean, there just needs to be improvement if we're going to move people into not just housing, but into um, you know, a productive lifestyle that allows them to live their American dream.
Supportive services are essential to people being successful in housing.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of it. And so I I know that we put out a lot of money for this and I'd like to, you know, see these services being offered because when they go to clean that up down there, obviously, uh, we want for people to be able to uh find stability.
Sir, if you want to chime in, I invite you to speak at public forum, but this is a work session right now. I I appreciate your being respectful. Um, Lexi, thank you so much for your time. Um, we will definitely follow up on tree-mining the process for for city um zoning and and things like that, because I I do think that that's a small win that or a low-hanging fruit that we can work on. Um, and if there's no other questions or comments from council, we're gonna move on. So thank you, Lexi, and we will see you on the seventeenth with other partners to help clean up and get people into housing down there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, our next and our last um presentation is from Southern Colorado Small Business Development Center. So Mr. Estrado, please come to the podium.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the invitation. Thank you, Mr. Flores, for that. Um, while they're bringing up the uh presentation, I just wanted to say that um Councilman Flo- Councilman Flores came to the office, uh, this summer and asked for some information and updates of everything that we are helping and assisting with for the entrepreneurial growth here in our county, Pueblo. And I just want to make it clear that I do also work with a few other counties. Um, so some of the information that you will see will also show the other counties that we serve, which are Custer, Fremont, and Warfino County as well. Okay? So as before, when I presented to council before, our mission is always to help existing and new businesses grow and prosper here in Pueblo, Colorado and the surrounding areas. Okay, we want to be the premier trusted resource for the assistance that these businesses need as we move forward and help them grow, um, in our community. Um, a little bit about us is that we've been around since nineteen eighty-nine and our host has consistently been Pueblo Community College. We are the only center in the state that can say we've had the same host and the support from the community on a consistent basis as that. Um, some services that we offer, we keep it in three basic forms. The first one is free business counseling and coaching services, free or low-cost educational classes and webinars. And then we are the resource connector. I'm not gonna go over everything that we do offer. Um, you can take a look at that. I want to show you the significant growth and participation that has happened over the last three years. We've had some major growth during the COVID, um, pandemic and we had a lot of people reaching out for assistance. Our busiest year was last year, um, with a significant growth of over a hundred individuals seeking, uh, support. Uh, we had a capital of formation of assistance for impact and revenue in the city, uh, for nine point five million. We supported about two hundred and sixty-six jobs. Um, we've created, I'm sorry, I can add those two numbers, a hundred and thirty-six jobs. Um, we hosted a hundred and thirty, um, training seminars. We had thirteen hundred individuals attend those seminars. Um, that was one of the biggest things that we heard from the community, that there wasn't enough education for business owners and they needed assistance with soft skills and training. In twenty twenty-two, we've already seen two hundred and eighty-nine clients this year. So again, almost another hundred and the year's still not out. Here's some educational opportunities that we've been promoting. Um, we wanted to do a lot of financial success education for business owners. So we brought in a financial consultant to assist them with that education. Uh, one of the other things that is very important in our community is childcare. It's one of the main issues that individuals continually say, this is why we have some employment problems. So what we're trying to do is educate individuals who want to be childcare providers and create those businesses, not just to treat it as, okay, I'm gonna take in these kids and I'm gonna take whatever's left after I run all my expenses. They are actually being taught how to run this exactly like a business. What rates do we charge? What services do we offer? What programs are available and resources throughout the community? Um, the next thing that we did launch is our ARPA funding. Thank you to the city for our female founders. We have ten, uh, women who went through the application process and they are in their fifth week, uh, female founders. And we are all on track so that they will continue to do everything that we accomplished through that process. Um, few other things that we, uh, brought, we brought in a new leadership series, um, which is helping businesses adapt to the new needs of the post-pandemic workforce. Um, there's new considerations that we need to take into play. We need to understand that individuals now know that they don't have to go to that job that they hated. They know how to, um, live with less or adapt. Many also started their own businesses during the pandemic. They found out that their side hustle could make them money. And others are looking for other opportunities why COVID happened. So these individuals that we brought in to help with that, they each are doing, uh, different techniques that create an environment that is motivating for their employees. Uh, they make their employees, uh, feel like they're part of the situation and the growth of the business. So what they're doing is to help them through all of the new steps to make the employee feel part of the team. Um, couple of things that we have coming out for the community in partnership with all three chambers. Uh, we're trying to help the small businesses who do not have a brick and mortar space, get some exposure, um, over this next quarter coming up in October. So we, um, had a really successful run at doing a minimal pop-up series last year, um, where we had different vendors come in at after-hours events and showcase their products and sell their products. So we've expanded that, that this year and it will be from, uh, in October, November and December. And it's a partnership with each one of the chambers so that we can get the marketing out to all of those individuals who are members and who normally attend this. And they will see what these businesses have. So we partnered with community organizations such as Rocky Mountain Serre and the Latino Chamber for the October event, and we're gonna do a trunk or treat. So individuals will be able to come to the after-hour event network, see some of these small businesses and also have a community event where they will be able to, excuse me, where they will be able to see these businesses and also celebrate Halloween. Uh, we'll be doing it in Thanksgiving as well, and then we will also do something, um, at Christmas. We'll take a look at how we'll set that up. One of the other things that has started is our digital empowerment program. During the pandemic, one of the individual things that we did come up with and we found out is that forty-two percent of individuals in rural areas such as ours do not have access to a technology device. Okay, there is sixty-two percent, uh, so did not have access to reliable internet. So I give a lot of presentations and I met a group called Human IT and they partnered with Visa and myself and we were given one thousand computers to distribute to business owners and entrepreneurs and adult learners throughout the Southern Colorado region. Right now, we've distributed three hundred and ninety-seven. Um, we're continuing to distribute these, um, throughout the end of the year, so I'm confident they'll all be gone. One of the things that, um, this program also does is it gives them education on basic computer aspects. So what we do is, once someone gets the computer, they do have to complete eight hours of a minimum of two hours, excuse me, but it's eight training modules on basics of the computer to help them get set up and what they're utilizing it for, they can plan. And then Visa, after they've completed their two hours, ask them to watch a financial literacy video because we do need to do some education on financial literacy. It's an ongoing education procedure. Um, so if you are an adult learner or a business owner or entrepreneur looking to start your business, um, they can reach out to our office and we can, uh, see if they qualify for that. Um, so Councilman Flores and, uh, Mr. Chavez asked for me to show how the partnerships were working in the community with the SBDC and other organizations. So one of the things that we work with and partner with at PCC besides, uh, Pueblo Corporate College is our Southern Colorado Innovation Link, which is an EDA program. It's funded through the EDA and what it is, is it's to help the other step that my, um, organization cannot facilitate such as patent, design concept, um, making demo products, um, helping them with all of that, uh, process before they come to me where they need the business plan, the funding and the other education. They help them work with that idea conception and so that that way they can help them develop that. And so once they start with, um, skill, they move on to the SBDC once we've gotten those other portions there. So it helps with the creative, uh, juices. And so one of the things that we work on with them is what is called Startup Pueblo. That meeting is actually happening right now as well. And it's an organization where, um, it's a networking group of entrepreneurs who started something from scratch. Um, so that is that partnership there for you. Okay, um, just so you know what they've done, they've currently worked with sixteen different businesses. Um, and they work on an average of four to five hours per month. Um, and they supported over forty startups in the last three years. Um, sixteen million committed investment both in hand and revenue for businesses. Um, and they are one of the primary individuals have brought businesses into Water Tower Place, um, because they continue to work on that. With, uh, the skill program, we have had an accelerator program, which is a, um, ten-week session training where different individuals apply and businesses apply for that. And then they receive education and support from mentors, um, investors and education on all things that they would need to start that business. Um, we also, uh, partner with them for the pitch competitions and with CSU Pueblo. So last year we did have, um, ten individuals participate in that with some receiving business offers from the investors, the Soco Angels, to, uh, join their, uh, business opportunity. Other collaborations, we have our Soco Angels. Those are investors throughout Southern Colorado that do, um, assist other, uh, businesses as they're growing. Uh, we partnered with Emergent Campus in Fremont County, which is right now is an incubator site that does house several different businesses throughout Emergent Campus. Um, we also work with the Fremont Economic Development Corporation and they help with businesses both in their area and our area if we need it. Um, one of the other things that we all partner with, uh, very heavily is the Pueblo Food Project. We help them develop a fifteen-week series for businesses that we're going to go into agriculture or through, um, some type of food industry or cottage-type business. So they went through a fifteen-week semester-length, uh, program that was hosted at Rocky Mountain Serre as well. A couple of the partnerships that are directly here in Pueblo that we're working on right now is we host a monthly marketing collaboration meeting between multiple organizations throughout Pueblo. Our goal here was to eliminate the silos and we wanted to make sure that the community was able to hear everything that all these organizations were working on that were related to business. So we work with each of the chambers. Um, we've brought Pueblo Workforce Center in so we can see what the updates are for, uh, labor needs, uh, individual, uh, new job opportunities, et cetera. Petco is now attending this meeting as well and the Downtown Association. That way we figure we can reach more individuals with all of our resources than just working in our own silos and repeating the same thing. Um, it's been a very productive effort. Um, and I'm really proud to say that we've been able to pull it off. Um, other partnerships, um, I'm not, well, you should, I'm, I believe you're aware, but Community Navigator Partnership, uh, Pueblo did receive a one million dollar, uh, grant through the Biden administration, which is helping small business owners with services that they normally can't afford, such as accounting, marketing services. Um, someone to actually help them do their research and resources as they develop their business plan. So this is an organization of community spokes. We have the Art Alliance. We have, um, SBDC, Pueblo Community College, we have Neighbor Works, we have a few marketing businesses all involved to offer these support services to businesses at no cost to them. Once the money is gone, the grant does end after twenty twenty-three, we will have to look to see if there's something else that is available there. The C- Community Navigator did fund a program and we were able to complete this. Uh, we just completed it, uh, September thirtieth. We were able to help thirty small businesses with, uh, thousand-dollar scholarships to establish their e-commerce, uh, platform. So now that they are open, um, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and they have that information out there, uh, for their businesses. Um, there's a couple of other things that we're working on with them now and that are in development. We're looking at leadership training for small businesses and that'll be a partnership with Pueblo Community College. Other things that we do, I mentioned that we work with Pueblo Food Project. Um, the other thing that my partners at the Colorado Workforce asked me to share with you is they've been really working very hard on, uh, creating some more access to employers and the job seekers. So they have come up with a few programs that will help them reach the school. They are allowing other agencies to use this training as well and they are going to start letting it out to other businesses. So as more information comes about with that, I can share that with you as well. But they do offer what is called LinkedIn Learning. That is for the job seeker who is learning to look for some more of these skills to make them more employable through, um, other jobs that are open. Uh, they also have their North Star, uh, tech security training. Um, and, um, they're LinkedIn, well, I have two flyers on LinkedIn Learning. I'm sorry. They sent me three, so I, uh, wanna make sure we got everything in there for them. Okay, few of the events that are coming up, um, that we have is, I'm missing a slide here. There we go. We partnered with Energize Colorado. They did a presentation for you as well. I'm happy to report that we had over a hundred loans for this particular, uh, twenty thousand dollar gap loan that was at a low interest rate to help business owners get through that hump of the next step without these, um, grants and items that were available in the past. Um, we have fifty-five loans in process. Thirty-five of those right now are being funded in the next week. Uh, some of the others still need some other documents to get, uh, to Energize Colorado so that we can, um, help get that funding, but that was really great. We were chosen as one of the four opportunities for this particular gap fund. Um, one of the slides, it's not in here, I sent a, an updated version late was, but thanks to Pueblo County, we are re-bringing back what we call the Pivot Jump Start Program that is a partnership with CSU Fort Collins. And this is a four-week college-level course that will help individuals learn how to adapt and pivot their business to the new marketplace. Um, you can see the different events that are coming up. The one that I'm excited about, um, that is happening this weekend and we were unsure if it was gonna be able to help, but we are having the first ever inaugural Childcare Expo, which is bringing together resources for childcare providers. And if childcare providers cannot attend the leading edge that we offer, they can get most of the information that is gonna be here on this Saturday. Um, so I wanted to let you know about that. Um, I talked about our pop-up series. Um, I'm really looking forward to that. And one slide that was here, our SBDC Center was nominated and I was awarded the Executive, uh, Director State Star Award for the State of Colorado. This is the first time that our center has ever been nominated for this war, award, so it puts Pueblo on the map. Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. What questions are there from council? Where Flores?
Brian, I wanted to thank you for that. It, it's amazing, um, all of the services that are available to people that wanna go into business. It's just, uh, an array of things. I think the only, the only area that you probably didn't focus on is, uh, you know, when you start a business, you need capital, obviously.
Yep.
But I think that you also probably are an expert in directing people as to how, uh, maybe they could partner with a bank or a credit union, whatever. Uh, and what makes, you know, a lot of sense. Sometimes that's where everything stops, but, uh, could you elaborate on, on your relationships that could help people?
Yep. What we do is, when we start off with the initial consultation, we do a full review of what this business owner is looking for and, um, I'm sorry to say, but I do not sugarcoat the whole situation of how hard it is and how expensive it is to start a business. So part of our initial process of filling that out is we go over all of the details for our startup expense. That way they know exactly what they're looking for. And then we educate them that they've gotta get started small so that they could start making a sale so that they can show the banker that this is a valuable product that people will buy. And then we work with them to get all of the education through the different partners and lenders that we have. We work with lenders and institutions throughout the whole state because right now banks are really not looking to lend on startup, uh, businesses. So we have to look for private investors. We have to look for other investment opportunities. Crowdfunding and crowdsourcing is becoming a huge part of how small businesses get started. Um, so that's why we're really working on the e-commerce aspect because if we can get you visible and in front of people, then you can get started and eventually you can work and in front of people, then you can get started and eventually you can work into a more brick and mortar spot, you know?
But thank you.
Um.
For your presentation this evening.
Yep.
Other questions?
Can you give me an example of the type of businesses that you're working with?
Yeah, I can give you several. It's really exciting to hear or to see as they come because when I first started, it was I want to open this shop or I want to do this gift shop and it's, it's just changed. I think when we had time at the with pandemic, we're like, hey, let's try this. Let's make this happen. So uh currently, right now, I am working with uh several restaurants. I am working with um, believe it or not, we have doulas and midwives in Pueblo and there is actually a market for that right now. And I had never really worked with developing that. So I've learned a lot of that. Uh, we have a lot of individuals coming up with crafting and woodworking businesses, turning hobbies into those businesses. Personal mental therapy is a huge growing market right now. And I work with several life coaches and therapists as they develop their home-based businesses and then see if they do want to move forward into um other, like a brick and mortar facility for that. Um, we have an auction house that we work with now. We have um a, uh, we have several bath and uh beauty type uh products. Uh, we have people who are doing uh hobby type things that they develop tools to make uh hobbies easier. Like we have a gentleman who's developed a fishing chair that we started from scratch and how it's adapted to each different thing there. We have um God, I think that's a a big overview, but it's just so exciting because there's so many um opportunities. I'm learning a lot. Childcare businesses are popping up. Uh, there's uh KOA campsites. People are using utilizing land for that. So it's exciting to see the ideas that are coming from individuals.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Saying no other questions then. Thank you, Mr. Estrada, for that presentation. I conclude this work session at seven oh two. We will have a recess for ten minutes before we start the regular meeting.